Well, I'll just, I'll just recognize you.
You're the retired educator tonight.
Yeah.
Debbie Grinnell.
And they have filled out the papers.
All right, I got two minutes to pass the time.
I changed plans to be back here.
I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote no.
No.
I'm gonna vote no.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have your attention. Appreciate everyone's attendance tonight. This, uh, regular session meeting of May the 29th, 2025, 5:00 PM for the Lawrence County School Board is now in session. Again, grateful for everyone's presence. Um, here at Lawrence County School Board, we started a couple of months ago, or a few months ago now. You know, the skill system, we're very interested in involved in, in raising our children in, in the manner that we'd like to, and producing quality members of our community and our society. Along with that is, is the, the competition that we enjoy among, uh, our, our athletic programs and then certainly our academic standards that we hold our schools to, to a high standard. But above that and beyond that, we as a board wanted to promote and, uh, and emphasize the overall character of our students. So we started several months ago of implementing a character trait recognition to begin our board meetings. So every month we have a student from one of our schools here in the county to come forth and make a presentation, a brief presentation of a character trait that means something to him or her. Uh, tonight we are honored to have Nate Tucker, a student from Loretta High School, and he will be doing our character trait presentation.
So the, uh, character trait that I chose, or it kind of meant to most of me, spoke out to me, was, uh, selflessness. And selflessness is the quality of being concerned for others and not just yourself, not just being self-focused. And, um, I put here, it's easy to do what benefits yourself, and it requires us to be like Christ when we put others above ourselves. Um, you know, a lot of times you just want to focus on just yourself, but you gotta be concerned about what others think and others' interests also. And the scripture that I chose that supports this is Philippians 2:4, and it says, "Let each of you look out not only for his own interests, but also the interests of others." And that really, I feel like, highlights, uh, selflessness altogether, um, as being concerned for others' interests and not just your own. Um, so, yeah.
Good job.
That's kind of quick.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
God bless and prayer.
You can, if you would like.
All right, let us pray. Lord, I thank you for your stay. I thank you for everyone in this room today, Lord. I just thank you, Lord, for everything that you do for us, Lord. I just pray that you protect and keep everyone in this room healthy and safe, Lord. And I pray that you would help us, Lord, to be more selfless, Lord, and, uh, follow in your footsteps. In Jesus' name, pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Appreciate that very much. Now I would ask everyone to please stand and join me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Ms. Ellidge, would you please call roll?
Adams. Alexander.
Here.
Daniel.
Here.
Dryden.
Here.
Jacobs. Rochelle. Shannon. Watson. Weathers. Five present, four absent.
By present, we do have a quorum, but for everyone's, um, information tonight with the, uh, attendance that we have, even though we have a quorum, uh, all items that are voted on have to be a hundred percent. Um, all five members have to vote yes. If any member votes you up no, or opposing, then the pass does not, or the motion will not carry. Um, because it still has to be a majority of the entire board, and that would be all five of us present. So that's how the business will roll tonight in voting. Um, next part of the meeting, we, according to the agenda, we have a presentation by Kay Dotson about foreign exchange students. So, Kay, the floor is yours.
First off, I want to thank the board. I've been right where you're sitting before, so it's kind of neat to come back and observe someone else. So I would like for Debbie Grinnell, who is, uh, an area rep, and Pat Littrell is the regional manager. They're up here to give me security. They're my security blanket. And I apologize if I sound nervous. I have a lot of problems with my voice, but my main purpose, our main purpose, and our, our student led so graciously right into student exchange. When he said to put others first. So International Student Exchange is an organization, educational, nonprofit organization that has been around for forty-three years. Lawrence County School System has always been gracious to welcome our students. You had thirteen this year. Loretta High School had five, and I'm proud to say I had one of them. I had a student from Italy who is in the air as we speak. So we mainly wanted to say to the board, we appreciate you so much, and our kids appreciate you so very much. In their countries, they do not get to have a graduation. They do not get to have a prom. They do not get to play football and do the activities that we in America take for granted. So going back to our student, an international student, when you host, you're putting someone else before you. You're welcoming, welcoming a student into your home just like they're your very own. And I can say from my heart, they become your very own, and it's very hard. John, you know that. Um, Mr. Daniels had a student that one time. So mainly, our whole purpose here tonight is to say to each and every one of you, thank you, thank you so much for allowing our international students to come and enjoy the pleasures that we take for granted every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dawson, yes, I will attest to the, how special that program is, and you were right, my family did house a foreign exchange student, I believe I was eight years old. Stefan Simon was a senior at Loretta High School. He later on was, uh, in my wedding, one of my groomsmen, and he and I still are very close friends, and I just received an invitation to go to New York City and visit him this summer. So, well, we're still looking to try to do that. But the relationships and the experience of foreign exchange program is, is unbelievable, and, uh, I encourage anybody to take advantage of that. So, thank you for that presentation. Uh, next item on the, uh, agenda is the recognition of the retired educator, and I'll turn the floor over to, uh, board member, Mr. Bill Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've addressed the audience.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, thank you all for being here tonight, and it's my privilege, uh, to, uh, I get a little emotional right here. I didn't realize I was. Mr. Mike Fisher and, uh, his, his wife, Vicky, they live in Leuma, Tennessee, and, uh, Mr. Fisher taught in Lawrence County Vocational, come on up here. Center, uh, for, uh, on the Lawrence County campus, uh, from the mid-seventies to two thousand and five. Now, correct me on any of this if I'm wrong, okay? So, uh, in seventy-five, nineteen seventy-five, across from the LCHS campus, there was a building being completed called the Vocational Building. And, uh, I happened to be a, a sophomore that year. Uh, at Lawrence County, there was a welding program, welding shop that they called it out there, and that was pretty well made up, Shannon, our, our VOTEC, uh, classes, all right? Information grew about something called vocational classes that were circulating through the students. Uh, a particular course caught my attention, ag mechanics. Ag mechanics, right? You remember? So, uh, I didn't want to take French, I didn't want to take art, but ag mechanics taught, uh, caught my, caught my ear. What's ag mechanics? Well, they had a tour, and they actually led us out of class to go tour the new, new building. And there was a fellow by the name of Mike Fisher, uh, that was waiting for a bunch of unlikely students to give a tour of the Vocational Building, right? You were a good bit younger back then. Yeah, and I was too. I signed up that day for, uh, uh, classes. My, my main schedule in the main building, uh, was rearranged. Uh, absolutely loved it, learned a lot of lessons there. Um, and I, I, this is one lesson I, I learned that, that I think we all need to grab onto. If you enjoy what you're doing, you'll never work a day in your life, right? You'll never work a day in your life. The courses Mike Fisher taught, uh, over his career consist of ag mechanics, small engines, intro to technology, and carpentry. I heard a story just a few minutes ago about something that you built a few years back, okay? So, uh, you can talk to Ms., Ms. Watson about that after the class, after, after we get through here.
It's been over twenty years.
Okay, yeah. Mike Fisher, I just want to thank you for investing in kids, uh, especially a kid that was searching for direction, uh, in, in my life in those days. Um, and area learning that, that over fifty years now, that I, I use what Mike Fisher has taught me, uh, to make a living. And we've impacted probably hundreds of people that have worked for me over the years because of some, uh, details, uh, that Mike Fisher, uh, taught me, and I'm so, I'm so grateful for that. So you invest in kids every day, um, you know, every day, even though you're not directly, uh, see them every day, but you've helped feed a lot of families, especially my family, uh, about what I was able to learn in those, those classes. So, um, the stepping stones that I want to talk about just for a moment that we have, and Ms. Watson and I talk about it a, a great deal, the CTE. We're familiar with CTE. The Vocational Classes was a stepping stone to where we are today in CTE, uh, which has absolutely exploded. It's fabulous. Uh, the CTE program gives, uh, kids opportunities to explore, uh, be creative, and dream outside the box, uh, to be exactly who the Lord has designed us all to be, right? So, thank you, Mr. Mike, for that, okay? I'm not done yet, okay? So, some, some would ask about, uh, Vocational or CTE, and, and some of the stigma now is that, uh, you mean you don't want to go to college? Well, I did both, okay? Uh, Vocational Classes, uh, Ag Mechanics, CTE, and also got a college degree. So, um, it's, it's well worth it. Uh, I wanted to have some fun. I wanted to work on some tractors. I believe there's a little red tractor that, that we completely tore apart and put back together under Mr. Mike's leadership, and we're just so grateful for that, okay? I recall a classroom setting, and he would have us all sit in a, in the classroom, not working on anything, and we'd have to look at slides, and he would talk. And it seemed like that class lasted forever, Mr. Fisher, okay? Then the words finally came out of his mouth. He said, "Now, let's go to the shop and have some fun." Amen? So we would take off and we would learn something, and some of the, the details that I remember learning is how diesel engines work. It's pretty amazing with, to a fifteen-year-old boy. Uh, why do diesels have no spark plugs? Fisher taught us that. The components of a gas engine and the, the four major components of a gas engine to run. Fisher, I use these things every day, okay? Every single day of my life in the work that I do. I remember the first tool truck that showed up on campus, and how amazed that we were that there was actually brand-new tools, you know, that could be bought. So, we want to thank you, and I can't thank you enough, for what you mean to me, and you mean to Lawrence County School System. I want to thank you on behalf of the school system, uh, Mr. Atkins, Chairman Daniels back here, does a great job, and all the school board. We just, we're grateful for teachers like you. Amen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Ellidge, and certainly thank you, Mr. Fisher, for his service. All right, next item on the agenda, we have, uh, capital project updates, and I have requi, we have, the board have requested all of our contractors to be on, uh, be present and give us an update on the different projects. Uh, we have three projects to be reported on tonight. Uh, first one I will call to the floor is, uh, Mr. Tylos Doss with Doss Brothers.
Hello, board. Thank you all for having me again. Um, update on the football field is, we have got the football field pretty much done, except for the irrigation and massage, and if it will quit raining, we'll have that done in the next week or so. Um, the, the, uh, concession stand out on Fieldhouse is coming together very well. Uh, the roof is on, it's completely framed, uh, the concrete locker benches are done. Uh, we got paint colors today, actually, so we'll be starting painting in the next couple of weeks. The actual metal roof will be going on in the next week. Um, everything's going to plan. Uh, don't want to bore y'all with all the details, but it's going well, and it'll be ready at football season.
Be ready to go for our first game in August.
Exactly right. I'll be there.
Awesome. I look forward to that. Any, any roadblocks that you foresee? Anything, uh, were there any, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Uh, any add-ons?
Change orders.
Change orders. Thank you.
I don't think we've had any change orders in the last couple of months, and, uh, well, we did last month, but it was just stuff that the school system was going to take care of, and we just worked together with Mr. Tucker to take care of it for you guys. LUS, I want to, I want to let all of you know that LUS actually come out and dug some holes for us for stuff that the school system was going to have to pay for, and we worked together and did that and helped out. And no cost, so.
Well, thank you to that and LUS.
Trying to keep the cost low anyways.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any questions for Tyler?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Next on the, uh, agenda, we'll look to, uh, the ESG group, Clint Gorman, is that correct, Clint? This is over the E.O. Kaufman restroom projects.
Yes, sir. Had a lot of tough acts to follow here. I appreciate your time, board. Um, so I'll give a, a short update on the construction of the, the bathroom renovations. We started on Tuesday of this week, um, May twenty-seventh, got the plumber in there, started working. Um, potential asbestos material was identified, so, yeah, we notified the county, and they're doing the, the necessary abatement to, to get rid of that stuff properly. So, that's kind of where we sit. Um, the sampling for the, uh, asbestos air samples are, are scheduled for tomorrow, so we'll know more coming early next week. And we get the plumber in there and get back to work, so.
What does that, uh, Mr. Gorman, what does that do to our timeline? Uh, do you foresee that causing us problems?
Um, it may add a few days, um, you know, but nothing serious, I think, yeah.
Because the goal is, and timeline is, the expectation of this board is that we're in and out of there by school startup. Is that, is that correct? I mean, that is, that is the timeline?
We're, we're still in great shape. Their project, I believe, is two weeks?
Yes, sir.
So.
Two weeks.
They'll be able to turn it back over to us and let us do the content and stuff, so we're still in great shape.
Okay. Great. Good news. Um, so, Ms. Gorman, two weeks, so that means y'all should be complete with your end of it before our next, uh, board meeting in June. Would ask that you would, um, I guess, can you be here again and just give us a final?
We will.
Uh, you know, summary on, on how everything went?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Gorman? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next one is the Summertown Circle Project and the renovations at Summertown High School. Uh, we have Randy Fowler from Slater Construction.
Hello.
Good evening.
How are y'all?
Great.
Good, good. Um, we started Tuesday, uh, you know, school, uh, stu, uh, everybody was out Friday, so, uh, with the holiday being Monday, we started Tuesday, um, doing the demolition work on the ceiling grid, uh, getting all of that out. Uh, we, we hit it hard. Uh, we've already got all the ceiling grid demoed, everything is out, and we're already putting the new ceiling grid back in. And, um, so, um, we're, um, we're making a, a lot of progress, uh, in, in a short period of time. Um, I've got, uh, painters have already started in different area. Um, in the circle area now, we are putting the, the ceiling grid back in, uh, and our electricians are, are coming back behind them and installing the, the new lighting in, uh, the, the, the grid. Uh, so, uh, as that moves along, um, we'll, we'll complete that circle, and, uh, I've got my painters in other, in the hallway area working now, uh, so that they're not on top of each other. But, uh, everything, uh, is going very well. I've been coordinating with Mr. Porter, uh, on colors and, and the scheme. They've got two different colors going in the hallway area, and, uh, uh, they've got some of the murals that's on the walls that they want to keep, so we've already got all of that coordinated and, and, uh, working together with that, so.
Great. Is, um, y'all had any, any issues, any roadblocks, anything that you need us board members to push on, uh, make sure that you have what you need?
Uh, not, not that I know of now. I've coordinated with Larry Brown and, and Mr. Tucker, uh, on some items, and, and, uh, we've addressed those and got a plan, and we're moving through.
Of course, the, uh, timeline is to be in and out fully completed, actually a little better than school startup, because we got to turn that back over to the school so teachers can be moved back in.
I think our, I think our deadline is July the twenty-ninth.
July twenty-ninth?
Yes, sir.
And you still foresee on, on time, on target?
Uh, yes.
Any questions for Mr. Fowler? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you next month, please.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have public comment. Um, public comment, we, uh, individuals designed to appear before the board, they must submit a written request with descriptive materials to the office of the Director of Schools of the day prior to the actual board meeting, no later than noon of that day. Uh, and the determination of whether or not the individual is allowed to address the board will be made, uh, by the Executive Committee, uh, that consists of Mr. Atkins and myself as the board chairman. Uh, tonight we have Ms. Maggie Hay, who has, uh, who has submitted set paperwork, who has met all of those requirements, and we have granted her permission to address the board, and we will allow Ms. Hay five minutes to speak to the board over the, uh, over the, uh, topic of reinstating, uh, valedictorian and salutatorian in the top ten to Lawrence County School System. So, Ms. Hay, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope you are all doing well. My name is Maggie Hay, and I just graduated from Summertown High School. I had the most amazing senior year and commend Summertown High School and Lawrence County School Systems in many ways for their amazing attentiveness to students' educational journeys and for the love and compassion that is shown by the faculty and staff. Thank you, Mr. Atkins and his staff and the school board members that continually put in hard in hard work and dedication in order to make the Lawrence County School System the best that it can be. I want you to know that your efforts do not go unnoticed. I am speaking today on behalf of myself and Isabella McDonald, the top distinguished scholar at Summertown High School, who couldn't make it tonight but sends her full support, and I'm sure many others as well who feel the same way that we do. I believe that the issue of reinstating the titles of valedictorian and salutatorian, as well as recognizing the top 10 in the class, is too important to go years without revisiting the factors that go into the current policy that restricts the titles from being given. I also believe that it is too important to not be addressed by a student who was affected by it. That is why I am here today. I know that this policy is not being voted on today, but unfortunately, I'm not able to be present at the June meeting due to external factors. My hope and prayer is that you will really examine my intentions and my heart in speaking today, and that you will truly contemplate the points that are given and base your decision off of what is best for students above all else, and I have full confidence that you will. From the first day of kindergarten up until where I am today, I have always worked extremely hard in school and outside of school to achieve my goals. I do everything in my power to perform to the best of my ability in whatever I'm involved in, and I know that I'm not the only one that does that. School has always been one of my main focuses in life. Getting good grades has always been a top priority for me, but most importantly, I just love to learn. But school didn't always come easy. I had to work extremely hard, especially in my high school years, to exceed my benchmarks that I'd set for myself. A typical day for me included waking up early, going to school, coming home and studying, and occasionally being with my friends. There was a lot that I missed out on to be in the spot that I am in today. It took sacrifice, it took dedication, and it took consistency. Nothing in life worthwhile comes easy. I am willing to do whatever it takes to accomplish my goals, and I know so many other people who are the same way that I am. I'm sure you all are too. However, I also know that there are many people who are not like that, specifically in a school-related setting, and that is okay, too. Some students are there because they have to be. Some students are just ready to go straight into the workforce, and for some students, school is the least of their worries. I understand that. I understand that for some, they do all that they can just to get by. We all have different passions and areas of focus in life, but I believe that those students who do go above and beyond more than earn a right to recognition. I believe that the distinguished scholar program is such an amazing concept and a great way to recognize outstanding students. I also recognize that the top distinguished scholar gives a speech at graduation, and that's good, too. However, I second in my class by a miniscule amount, I received no recognition. I am extremely proud of Bella McDonald and all of her hard work, and I believe that if anyone deserves to be recognized, it is her. But I also believe that I, along with several others, worked just as hard as her, as I'm sure she would agree. Distinguished scholar is heavily based on having a high ACT score, a 26 or above to be exact. I realize the importance of the ACT, but only because of the scholarship money that comes along with it. The ACT is important for college acceptance and for scholarships, but I, again, along with many others, believe that the ACT is not a true display of a student's intelligence. I could not begin to tell you how many students I know that are extremely intelligent and capable of anything that they set their minds to, but they're just not good at taking tests. The ACT is designed to test your knowledge to an extent, but at the end of the day, it is mostly designed to measure students' test-taking abilities. For example, there could be a student who's eighth in the graduating class. They work extremely hard in school and they make good grades and have a fairly high GPA. However, they're not good at taking tests due to whatever the factors may be, whether it is time limitations, the nerves that accompany the test-taking process, or simply tricky wording of a question. Does this mean that this student is not intelligent? Does this mean that this student does not deserve to be recognized for all of their hard work? No, it doesn't. I believe that taking a test does not define a person's intelligence. I absolutely believe that distinguished scholars should be kept in our school system as it was a great addition to it. But I also believe that tops 10 should be reinstated, along with the titles of valedictorian and salutatorian. I realize that there was an issue at some point in time because of the level of difficulty of the various classes being taken by several students and the effect that their grades had on the ranks in their class. I understand that the level of rigor can be very different based on the difficulty of the class. However, that is where the grading system that our county implements comes in so that this dilemma does not occur. I understand that grading systems are not foolproof. I also understand that I am not in the profession of education. I do not have a level of expertise that all of you have. All I know is that there has to be another solution to this problem, rather than overlooking it and simply taking away the earned titles that Bella worked hard for, that I worked hard for, that our top 10 worked hard for, and that future students will work hard for. Colleges recognize valedictorians and salutatorians with scholarships, and almost all of the other surrounding counties recognize valedictorian and salutatorian in whatever way they see fit. This proves that there has to be a solution to the problem since these other counties have overcome these discrepancies to make it a fair system. I truly have faith in our school system and their drive to always do what is best for the students. I believe that this change to our school system would truly be for the betterment of the schools. It is my hope that the school board can create a policy that gives students the recognition that they deserve in a way that is fair for all students. By looking at the surrounding county's systems and implementing some of their ideas, I truly believe that LCSS can bring back valedictorian, salutatorian, and top 10 in a way that is fair and a true representation of the students' abilities in the classroom. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you for truly caring about the students in our county, and I pray God's blessing upon each of you.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. Appreciate that. Very well spoken. Okay, next item on the agenda, we'll get into the meat of the agenda. Consent items to be voted on as a group. We'll do a vote. I will look for a motion to approve all items A through E. Is there any questions concerning any of these items? Give you a moment to look over them real quick. All of these things should be in your packet.
Move with approve is presented.
I have a motion to approve consent items A through E. Do I have a second?
Second.
We've got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to line item number two, report items, and we'll go to personnel report on Mr. Atkins.
Mr. Chairman, I believe everything is in there for your review. I think we'd list, um, new hires. Yes, there it is.
Yeah. Yeah, I know this time of year, historically, we see it every year, there's a lot of, uh, musical chairs, people retiring, new people coming and going. Um, so, there'll be a lot more reporting before now and next school year. Any questions on the personnel report? Director's update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things. Uh, the end of the school year, last Friday, um, a great school year for us. Uh, teachers did an outstanding job. Our, everyone in the school system once again performed at the level that we asked them to do for our kids, and that's obvious. And we're working on the data now. We've gotten some preliminary data, but as you know, that data will be embargoed. We will not be able to talk about things for a while, but I believe we'll be able to give a presentation, as we've done in the past with Mrs. Ridgeway, discussing that information. We'll get that to you when we can. But we do feel good about some of our spots, areas that we've worked on. We've seen some improvement. We're in the hiring process. Our principals are interviewing, they're making recommendations. Uh, a lot of things happening this time of year as summer school's taking place. It started Tuesday at three locations, and, and we've got a good number of students there, a lot of teachers working. Uh, that is always a challenge this time of year, but it's working really well in Lawrence County. Capital projects underway. You heard several of those tonight, but we do have a lot of things taking place and some future projects that I've shared with the board in the weekly update. Our academics, again, we, we'll have some more data on that later. Hopefully, learn a little bit more from the state as to when those dates will, uh, that date of those releases will be made available. The Class of 2025, the three graduations were outstanding if you were able to be a part of that. The high school principals did a really good job, the recognition of the students, the things that they do at the graduations really does spotlight our kids, and it sets us apart from other districts, and we're very proud of that. And then we have our retirees, the Class of 2025. And as you can see on the, on the screen in front of you, a lot of folks retiring. We have three at the central office. Uh, Mrs. Rachel Counts, Dr. Jamie Glass, and I'm trying to see my third one there.
Berks.
Mrs. Berks, Kathy Berks. That was, I think, a 100 years of service when we had the group last week. Uh, those folks have done an outstanding job, and they will be missed, as will the folks who are retiring from these schools and their contribution. As I remind them, each and every Friday, they have an opportunity to make a difference in the life of a child. I think Mr. Adams said it tonight, talking about Mr. Fisher and what an impact he had on Mr. Adams. There will be students in the years to come sitting in this, in this position, recognizing teachers who impacted their life. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to take the opportunity, and you made mention of the, I looked, hopefully all the board members had the opportunity. I appreciate whoever put the slideshow together for the graduate, or the retiring class of 2025. I know several of those people personally and think highly of each and every one, but I do, um, on behalf of the board, thank them for their, uh, their many, many years of service and wish them the best, and I'll give them a round of applause for their service. Thank you, Mr. Atkins, for that update. Next item, uh, LCEA. I don't see anyone here on, from the LCEA. We'll move to the Tennessee Legislative Network. Uh, don't have an update on that either. Does another board member have any thing to add to the Tennessee Legislative Network? Dr. Shannon normally does that for us, so. We'll move on. If there's nothing else, items for consideration and discussion and action. Um, line item number three, Executive Committee items for consideration, uh, the LCHS water heater. Uh, we've had much discussion about this back and forth from a few meetings. We sent this back out. We, uh, we denied the last time because we needed more information and more time to think about it. It was sent back out for a re-quote. Um, and this is, Mr. Atkins, you speak to, I guess, the one quote that we received?
Yeah, the one quote and the work is already underway to, to make this happen. Uh, it's been a, uh, it hasn't been delayed, but it has taken a little bit of time, some, some changes over there. But, uh, last I heard from Mr. Tucker, we are set on that. That project is completed. Already started.
Yeah, we did a preapproval, if I recall, the last meeting. As we reported, it was not going to exceed, um, a certain amount, and so we did the preapproval. So. It's under work, so thank you for that. Uh, South Lawrence School, is that, is that South Lawrence School?
Yes, sir.
Uh, farmland farming south of, uh, going to Joseph Heeman.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we, we were contacted about exploring the option of leasing that out for farm, and, uh, we put it out and we got a bid, and Mr. Heeman was the recipient of that bid, and he's going to pay the school system around $3,500 a year for farming rights. We've had conversations with him about how close he can get to the, the playground there at South Lawrence, and, uh, he's been a great partner so far. We're not concerned with, uh, his access to that. We are putting up a fence down there, not because of the farming, uh, aspect, but we do have some concerns with students down there that we want to be fencing. And Mr. Tucker and I met with the principal earlier this week and discussed the location and so forth on that. But we feel really good about Mr. Heeman and being a partner with the school system.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Is there any, do we need to approve that, or has that been approved?
It was approved Executive Committee, but if the board as a whole could kind of do a voice vote to approve those two items, I think that'd be great.
Well, let's just call row.
Okay.
If you don't mind, please call row.
We're gonna, are we gonna do it on both items?
Uh, well, the first item, we called rolled and, and voted on last, last month.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Uh, but this one, I don't think we ever did a, a true, um, vote.
All right. So, this is to approve the farming land south of South Lawrence Elementary School?
Yeah, to approve to give him this, uh, this bid, to take that bid.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Watson? Five yes.
Five yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next line item number four, budget items, approval of the 25, 26 budget. Have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any remaining questions from the work session regarding the budget? Please call row.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Five ayes.
Motion carries. Next line item, Summertown High School gym dressing room replaced HBA unit, vendor Arctic Air for a total of $2,749.
Mr. Chairman, this is a project that we've been looking at for a couple of years now, and Mrs. Elidge was able to allocate some dollars for that. Mr. Tucker coordinated that with Arctic Air, and I believe that is a locker room downstairs that has been in need for some time, and we finally got around to getting that taken care of.
Which, which locker room is that? Boys or girls?
Boys.
Boys. Okay. I'm making motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Adams has a second. Any questions? This is coming out of fund balance?
This will be coming from the Education Capital Projects budget.
Capital Projects budget. Thank you. All right, no further questions. Please call row.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Five yes.
Next item, Summertown High School classroom furniture.
Mr. Chairman, this is a part of the renovation up there as we moved the high school back to its original location, and, uh, part of the overall renovation, that included some furniture that Mr. Porter and his team, uh, asked that we look at. We gave them a budget. They were able to come back in under that budget, and these items will be ordered as quickly as the board approves it. And it may be a little delay with that, but we should have this in the early part of August.
Move with approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Please call row.
Adams?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Five ayes.
Motion carries. Line D, LCHS paving.
Mr. Chairman, this is in line with our capital projects of renovating, uh, parking lots, cleaning those up. Uh, many of our parking lots, I shouldn't say many, all of our parking lots were in need of improvement, and we found dollars through COVID and some other things. Again, Mrs. Elidge able to, uh, drive that kind of work for us. And this parking lot, Lawrence County High School, as you can imagine, is the largest one. It will be our most costly parking lot just because of the size of it. But I believe the Rogers Group got that bid, and they will begin that work this summer. We hope to have that complete by the early part of July, if not sooner.
Is this, is that the entire parking?
So, it is the road coming off Springer, the, the, the part in the front, the parking So it is the road coming off Springer, the part in the front, the parking in the front, the parking on the sides and the back, CTE. The only spot that's not being paved is where we're looking at the multipurpose building north of the gym and east of the science building, that lot right there. We're not paving that because we do have future, but it is the entire campus and curbing around that.
And curbing. Any other questions? We have a motion?
Move with approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any final questions? Ms. Elidge, please call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Motion carries. Before we move to the next line item, I will bring the board up to speed. I had inquired to Mr. Atkins pertaining, or it just kind of ties into this parking lot. I don't know if anybody has been aware or know, when you travel down Wicklow Creek Road heading east, the ditch is getting pretty bad washed. And I had asked Mr. Atkins about that, and that belongs to the city. Have you heard anything? Have you been able to reach out to anybody from the city?
I haven't heard anything back from the initial inquiry about it. I will make a note to check on that.
Yeah, please do. I think somebody needs to, you know, and I wouldn't be opposed to entertaining a partnership with making that right, because, I mean, it's just, please, board members, drop down there and look at it. I know you see it. It's washing out bad, and it's washing out coming from water off of our parking lot, you know? So I would not be opposed to us to entertain making some kind of good faith gesture with the city and let's put some riprap in there or something, because it's just getting worse. So anyway, thank you. Next line item, E, Lawrence County High School District, or Lawrence County School System District-wide summer school supplies, total of $32,000. Fund source, the Summer Learning Camp Grant.
Mr. Daniel, we can actually, I failed to ask you to remove this. We can actually remove this. We were able to purchase these materials. The biggest chunk of this $32,000 was books that we were actually able to find from another source other than Amazon and saved the district about $5,000 if I remember correctly. So we have made this purchase already and kept it under the $25,000 mark that was required to come back to you guys. So I apologize for not already having that removed.
No, good. Thank you. Any questions about that before we move on? Other items of consideration on line five, approval of differentiated pay plan.
Mr. Chairman, we're required by the state of Tennessee to present a differentiated pay plan each year. Ours hasn't changed any from last year that I would recall. We do have some lead teachers, some teacher mentors, our grow your own, so it is the same as it has been. It does recognize somewhere in there our differentiated pay plan for our UDL teachers who work with our students. We pay them a little bit more per hour than we do the others.
All right. Look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Have a second. There's no money. This is...
Well, it is the same allotment of money that we had last year.
Please call roll.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Motion carries. Next line item, approval of sport co-op agreements. There's the list on the board. Any, anything to add to that, Mr. Atkins?
No, sir. I believe it's an annual agreement where if a school does not have a team in a particular sport, they can co-op with another school that has that team.
Any questions? I'm making motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we get to that last line item, a couple of things I would like for Mr. Atkins to consider and the board to consider. When do we have our safety briefing and report? I mean, I'm thankful, and all of us as a board, all of us in the whole system are thankful for another year in the books without any significant safety incidents, and we're grateful for that, for the hard work that our SROs and all of our administration and teachers do throughout the system to maintain the safety. But that doesn't happen by accident. Safety happens on purpose and by purpose and for purpose. So I want to, as a board, we want to make sure that we're staying on top of that. So when do we, I know we normally have one, kind of like an end of the year, I guess, or I'm asking the board, how about we consider having an end of the year report from Officer Dornin, who is chief over all the, or supervisor over all of our SROs, and any safety concerns or issues we might need to look at before August rolls around? So can we get that put on the June agenda and have him? Anybody opposed to having him come and report to us? Thank you. Please get that on the next agenda. Also, just a bit of information for the rest of the board members. All of Mr. Atkins' evaluations have been turned in, and the summary has been generated and sent to me in email. I will be forwarding that to you guys in an email. The common practice of that is I will sit down in a meeting with Mr. Atkins, one-on-one, to go over that and give him the feedback from the board. From my understanding, to comply with law, that is a one-on-one meeting between he and I as the chairman. If I send, when I email you that evaluation, if you have, you know, you had opportunity to put comments in, but I will send you that in an email. If you want to add some more comments to that, I'll give you a few days before I set up that meeting with Mr. Atkins, and you can simply email me, hey, ask him this, ask him that, look at this, look at that. But I will be setting up within the next week or two a review of that evaluation with Mr. Atkins. Now, if I understand, they're welcome to be present, but again, that's not a, that's not a collaboration, that's not a meeting, but you're welcome to be present, if I understand that right. Is that...
I would want to check and just verify, make sure that we understand that correctly, because there is the sunshine law.
Sunshine law, that we have to make sure.
But I think on something like that, I do believe you're allowed to get together in voice and have a say in that.